Order adequate notices required by the open public meetings act was provided on December seventeenth, twenty twenty four by posting the notice with the respective clerks, city of Lambertville, Earl Stockton, township of West Ham, and advertised in the Hundred and County Democrat. Please join me.
What do we have to do before I prepare the dates from there? Do we have a ten?
One nation.
Jennifer Bachelor?
Here.
Martha Devon?
Here.
Gina Vichetti?
Here.
Brian Keys?
Here.
Kevin Golletky? Aaron O'Leary? Michael Shroud?
Here.
Ronnie Tom Marino?
Here.
And Jim Gallagher.
Do you want to explain my
Yes, I they want to explain. So you'll notice Ronnie is sitting in the presidency tonight. Jim Gallagher could not be here tonight because his wife is being honored by the N G A as the art teacher of the year. So tonight it's actually their gathering. They have a banquet. So like I said, you need to go to that. But it's hard for me. So we want to say congratulations to Lamell and Jim.
We'll start with P T O and the unfazed.
I actually I'm going to read something from Jeff. You know me. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the P T O, we saw we're sorry we couldn't be there in person tonight. We hope you're all doing well. This this past Friday, we held our annual trunk or treat. It was one of the biggest trunk or treat events we've had since before COVID. We had about thirty trunks in total with incredible help from the four H Club. A huge shout out to our committee chair and her amazing team for organizing such a fun and successful event. We'd also like to thank the first responders from West Danville who came out to support us, keep everyone safe. Thank you to everyone who hosted a trunk, participated as a walker, and helped make the night so special. Special thanks as well to the Holcomb family for the fantastic hayride. And again, to the four eight club for joining in the fun. A huge thank you to our custodial staff, both at South and throughout the district for always being so helpful, responsive, and patient with all of our P T Oceananics. The P T O will be reaching out to all three buildings this week to work with them on a treat to thank our custodial staff, district. A few weeks ago, we wrapped up our Scholastic Book Fair at South Elementary, which was one of the largest we've ever had, if not the biggest. Thank you so much to Lee Russo, who particularly lived at the school all week to make sure everything ran smoothly. Thanks as well to all the volunteers and families who supported the fair. It was a tremendous success with a total sale reaching ten thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. We're proud to share how those funds are being used. Four hundred and sixty was contributed to our community through Share the Fair. Thank you. Two hundred and twenty-five was spent on sponsored books for students using Share the Fair funds with the remaining balance to be used in the spring. A thousand dollars went to the library, including several new Spanish language titles. A thousand dollars was given to Mrs. Camiones to distribute books to students. Four hundred and fifty in P T O funds supported classroom libraries and teacher resources. Our fall enrichment program is continuing smoothly, and families can check out upcoming club highlights in the news lights, which went out today. This week's spotlight is on mindful creations club. We are currently planning a fifth and sixth grade activity night at the middle school on November fourteenth with more information coming soon. Our next kids night out at South Elementary has been moved to November twenty first. The P T O has recently sponsored coffee and donuts for staff in all three buildings on October seventeenth and provided refreshments for the homecoming band. Last week, we donated stuffed eagles to the elementary school. If you have a student there, ask if they spotted Ziggy around the building. The stuffed animals will be used for special classroom projects. Looking ahead, we want to thank the fish family in advance for bringing their snow cone truck for South Elementary's Halloween celebration this Friday. The kids are so excited. The P T O will also be providing ice pops for all the pre K students in bulk locations. Thank you all for your continued support of our schools and community. Have a wonderful night. And as always, we welcome new members, new ideas, and any questions you may have. Please feel free to reach out to us via email anytime.
Anyone from the L E F? Megan Sinkus, Lambertville Area Education Foundation. So we had our annual golf day on October sixth. The turnout was fantastic, better than it's been in previous years. And we have our board meeting next week, so we're still working out the financials on how we did, but I think it was extremely successful. So we want to thank the community, our sponsors, Mr. Suso, for really all the support in making that a very successful and fun day for everybody that came. Our next focus is on our letter writing campaign, which is coming up and coinciding with Giving Giving Tuesday, which is on December second. So we will begin, you know, putting together all of our letter writing and going out to the community, looking for support. We're also in process of reviewing several grants at the committee level that will be brought to our board next week. So we're looking forward to to kind of getting into those and hopefully moving some of those forward. And much like the P T O, we're always looking for members, so we're actively seeking new board members. Again, you can reach out to us. We're on our website or through emails. We'd love to have people come and join and and really help push forward a lot of things that we put through for the for the community and the schools.
Thank you, Mary.
Yep.
That's Val.
As mentioned, though, home stretch, our first quarter of the year, we look back at a successful fall. Girls Field Hockey has had tremendous success. They recently became the conference champions. Meanwhile, seasons for the boys soccer and football are coming to a close. Members of both key club and peer leader are starting to take action. E Club recently just last week went on a field trip and peer leaders coming up have an anti vaping presentation at the middle school that they're doing, as well as a parent's night out later this month, I believe. As mentioned before, hosting the truck or treat had a great turnout. A lot of families went and fostered a community at South. As we continue the year, we're looking at ways to limit phone use. We talked about specifically during lunch or maybe some sort of like fundraising event where it's a full day. Everybody puts their phones in some sort of reward for the students at the end, as well as doing survey surveys and putting things out to try to use A I in both an academically honest and efficient way, as well.
So I will mention that Val and I met last week and we had a good conversation about as a district, we are, you know, a kind of attacking A I in a variety of different ways. And beyond with our staff use, I'm also very interested in our student perspective. So Val's working with me now on putting together a survey for our students in grade seven, twelve, just to get an idea of their overall understanding of A I and maybe how they utilize it. So that will be coming out shortly. And then, as he had mentioned, we talked about perhaps some incentives for maybe phone free. This is for the high school specifically, phone free Fridays and lunch period. You know, when I come in sometimes during the student lunch, which I've been there a lot, you know, I I cringe sometimes when I see five or six people at a table rather than talking to each other or looking at their device. But we've talked about maybe the possibility of having Fridays where we leave the devices in the locker for the lunch period, and we actually talk to one another and have some good conversation. But Val did inform me that there would have to be some place at the center on the other side. So we're we're negotiating that as we speak, and then we'll share more of that information, you know, probably at our next meeting. Thank you, Val.
There was no correspondence this month, but whenever we do have correspondence, it's always attached to the agenda on board docs. And I guess we need to have need a motion to approve the right our regular minutes. We're doing it three different, three different.
Delay the regular executive vote. And then I stuck it for the second.
All right. So can I please have a motion to approve our minutes from us? Thank you, Martha. Second. Right? That's a voice vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone standing? Then we'll have I like a motion to approve the executive session minutes for September twenty ninth. All right, that's also all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone standing? And then we also have our the minutes from our special meeting on October eighth. Motion to approve those. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone standing? Now we'll move on to.
Yes, we have two things under our words. First, I'm going to ask you and Ellen Lennon, our director of curriculum instruction assessment, to come up, present our twenty-four, twenty-five N J S O A data. And then I also have a superintendent's update with a lot of neat things that are going on in the district right now. You know, they're always.
All right. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, administrators, faculty, community members. Tonight I'll be sharing an overview of our spring twenty twenty-five N J S L A or New Jersey Student Learning Standard Assessment results for our school district. The presentation provides district, school, and subgroup analysis for language arts, mathematics, and science. Before we review our N J S L A results, it's important to emphasize that our district uses multiple measures to evaluate student performance. A single data point such as a norm can never tell the whole story of a student. The New Jersey Student Learning State Assessments provide a statewide snapshot of grade level proficiency each spring, but it captures just one moment in time. Throughout the year, we use the i Ready Diagnostic, the Lincoln Benchmarks, Classroom Assessments, and Teacher Feedback to monitor growth and adjust instruction. The slide up here is showing the N J S L A, the state assessment, as it compares to our i Ready Diagnostic Assessment. The i Ready Diagnostic is both aligned to the New Jersey State Learning Standards and it's nationally normed. This means that while the test questions reflect our state standards, student scores are also compared to a sample of students around the country who take the same assessment. So approximately three million students around the country take the math i Ready Assessment compared to about two million who take the reading. Also, I just wanted to share a little data about the state of New Jersey. So of the five hundred and ninety school districts in the state of New Jersey, three hundred and nine use i Ready in grades K through eight. That's about eleven hundred and twenty, I think, was the exact number that I got of schools that use it. So I just am trying to put into perspective some of the questions that may come up about i Ready versus N J S L A. So I also want to share that last year in the spring, I presented about the growth that our students made from the fall with the i Ready Diagnostic to the spring. So as I'm talking about that, you can see from that chart that I talked a little bit about the alignment. So the national norms give us an idea of where our students are compared to other students nationally. Are they compared to being above them in a percentile? Are they below them or are they about the same place? And that's a national norm as well as the standards on New Jersey. So again, I just am comparing because I just want to make sure that we take into consideration multiple data points and not just the N J S L A scores. And then you can see some other comparisons about the feedback. We just got those results in October as compared to when we give the i Ready Diagnostic. It's immediate. So there's different types of data that we're using as we've shifted our focus on data here in South Hundred. And so we can measure student progress and growth. And we can also pivot and say, where do our students need more support? And how do we put that into instruction? So I did want to go ahead and make that those points clear before I get into the N J S L A. The other thing I also want to talk about or just mention before we get into the N J S L A, which also then has to do with the field testing coming up next week is i Ready is what's called an adaptive assessment. So that means students are begin an i Ready Diagnostic, actually one grade level below. And then as the student is presented with different questions, the questions change based on the student's correct or incorrect answers. And then based on where the student ends the assessment, it's a scaled score. So it adapts to where the student is and the the skills and standards that they are successful, and then where they need additional support. The diagnostic is actually only expected to for students to gain about fifty percent of the questions correct. That means that we then develop, the program develops what's called a personalized learning path. There was a lot of information about an i Ready adaptive, but the reason I'm telling you is that because the New Jersey Standard Learns S L N J S L A is shifting to an adaptive test model in the spring. So I think the state has realized what we've all realized with an adaptive assessment and not just an assessment that evaluates students on the end of the year progress for two hours in May. And so we know very, very little about the N J S L A adaptive assessment in the spring. We know that the field test that the students will be taking next week and the following week at the high school is really truly just to test the questions. We will not get results. We actually don't even need to assign rosters other than to make the program work. It's really just for the state and Cambium, the new assessment company, to test their questions. So with all of that, next week, we will have our field tests, and they will be given at the middle school on Monday and Wednesday, and then the following week at the high school, I think it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then, based on the testing of the questions, we'll get more information hopefully throughout the year. And then in May, the students will be given an adaptive test. We don't know anything more than that right now. Lot of information before we dive into actually how the district did, but I just wanted to share a little bit about the context of where we are right now. Always, I always link the N J S L A Student Learning Standards, and on that link, you can see the National New Jersey D O E website, and it has all of the standards for all of the content areas. Students are assessed, again, for those that are new to the N J S L A in language arts and math. And then in science, it only in grades five, eight, and eleven. And it does, on the slide, I did note that grades five, it is assessed on science material from three to five, eighth grade is from six to eight, and then the eleventh grade is science content taught from nine to eleven. These are the performance levels. Again, seven fifty is where our magic number is as the beginning of what we call our meeting expectations performance band. We refer to those as performance bands or levels, and it is the same scoring for both E L A and math. Science is a little different, and you'll see that on the science chart when I show that. So here we'll go through a little bit of an overview. What I'll share with you is the language arts, the math, and then the science. We'll look first at the language arts. And what we're looking at here is the growth over three years. The board has a copy or will have a copy of it that they can view more closely. But what I did was I circled in green things that we should highlight, and that indicates student growth. And that's what that green circle is. It's a little hard to see on the bottom, but those are the performance bands. If we look at specific grade levels, grade four really stands out as sixty-six, sixty-four point six percent of the students are above grade level, at or above grade level. So grade four is a cohort that we are following that is doing very well. Grade six also performed strongly with fifty-two point two percent of the students' meeting expectations. It's the highest individual meeting. Grades three and nine showed growth, but also at the other end, where I don't have circles, but year over year, our levels one and two are decreasing. So that means as you look from twenty-three to twenty-four to twenty-five, specifically if you take a look at level three, you'll see that that percentage is going down in level two. And that means that our M T S S, our systems of support, our interventions are working. Because if that level one and that level two are going down, those students are moving somewhere else, which means up. So I just wanted to point that out a little bit. This next slide shows the growth of our district compared to the state. Overall, since the pandemic, the state nationally is not, or state nationally, nationally, students are not doing as they were performing on any state assessment as they did in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, but we are seeing growth. So we're seeing growth in our district above the state level, which is just showing us that all of the work that we're doing is coming together to meet those percentages above the state. This is again a little challenging to see, but you will see some highlights with the grade levels. Again, we're looking at grade four as a cohort that is a standout. We're also looking at grade, excuse me, grade three as another one that has made progress. And as you can see, it's very difficult to read it small words, but this is all grades three through nine and all students. So the little green bar, the furthest one, is the exceeding. So you'll see that growing. And as if you went back to the chart that has over the three years, you'll see that that is making some improvements. Here's our mobility chart, and I just want to point out some things about mobile, about the mobility and just clarify some of the color bands. So the achievement chart includes the color coding that can be easily misunderstood without some context. It's important to clarify what each of the colors means so that everybody has an understanding that it's not necessarily going down or going up. The yellow segment is stable achievement. That means students did not move. So they could be exceeding or meeting, and they did not move. So that is something that can be celebrated because we don't necessarily want to assume that that is going down or decreasing. The red segment, although visually prominent in this case, just represents student changing grade level, changing changing performance bands. So a student could have moved from exceeding to meeting, and that's fine. We know that we've shifted curriculum around. We've know we've put some things into place that have shifted some of the expectations of our students. And so the red doesn't necessarily mean those are, you know, prominent in a, you know, in a negative way. That just means students move from one band to another. When the results, the most areas that we need to target in these areas, right before I move on to E L A, I just wanted to share when we went in a little bit deeper into the reasons why these changes may have occurred. When we looked at the standards, it's truly the informational text that we see as the one standard that is the trend amongst our E L A scores. And when we adopted the wit and wisdom curriculum last year for all grades K eight, we did that because of the strong balance that it provides for both informational and fictional text or narrative. And so that was very, very important because prior to that, in many of, especially the upper grades of the elementary, there was not a focus or even a balance of informational text. So informational texts are what we, you know, nonfiction. So by bringing nonfiction in fifty percent of the information or the reading material to the students, it's going to take a little bit of time for their brains and for them to understand how informational texts work. They're different than fictional. And so that's why we may have seen some of these shifts in performance level. And now we'll move on to math. Again, in the math, we see the fourth grade cohort make exceptional gains with a fifty-four point two percent meeting and exceeding. This is a fifteen point increase since two thousand twenty-three and well above the state average that you'll see on the next chart. So this cohort, as we've seen, is benef, has benefited from some of the small group instruction and the way the elementary teachers, we've shifted some of our instructional practices. So we've looked at how can we reuse reveal in ways that we may not have used it in the past? So how are we doing a mini lesson? And then how are we identifying students who may need additional support within the classroom? And so that's really where we see those instructional shifts. And we need, we know that we need some, we need to address some of the seventh and eighth grade standards. And when we specifically pulled those, they're called evidence statements from the N J S L A, we saw that our seventh, our current seventh graders, the main areas of focus are geometry and statistics and probability. Statistics and probability is a relatively new, we call domain, for students at that level. And so it might not be surprising that they did not master it the first time they were exposed to it. In our current eighth grade, the evidence statements and where we see the most the weaknesses and where we see the most need for targeted support is ratios and proportions and algebraic equations. So again, our students have been exposed to algebra and algebraic expressions since kindergarten. But at this point in the middle school, they're now being asked to use algebra and algebraic expressions. Ratios and proportions, again, a relatively newer concept. And maybe the students then just needed an additional support. So those are the things that we're focusing on as we are looking at what the students need in the middle school math classes. And again, this is our district, and you can see where we are above the state average, and those are the green circles. Again, we're making progress over the year. So yes, we'll have to do something about the slide next year, so it's a little bit easier to see. And so basically, what we're looking at here is all of our grades and where are our needs and what do we need to target? Grades four to five went up, grade six to seven. These cohorts show meaningful progress, which again, has to do with the instruction and instructional models that the teachers are using. What we did do when we dove into the data a little bit more is we did see that about one in four students in several of these cohorts moved up a performance band, and we'll see that when we look at the mobility slide. Yes, there we go. So if we think about our small percentages in our classes or our small classes, and we're looking at, you know, a class size of twelve, if we have one in four students that move up a performance band, that means an entire going from meeting to exceeding or approaching to meeting, that's actually a very, very good number. And that's a strong indicator that our interventions are working and our differentiated instructional models also are working. So we're continuing to refine this in our instructional models. We have a solid curriculum reveal in place that now we'll be moving into our sixth year, and every year we're learning new ways that we can use reveal. And actually, every year, reveal is providing more resources within their curricular program that other districts and the publishers and everything have been asked. So it's not a stagnant program. It's not anything that we bought six years ago, and it's still the same. It's ever changing. And we get those updated resources based on our relationship with reveal. As we go ahead and look at science, our scores in science improved. I think that what we need to know about the science assessment and N J S L A is that after last year, and so many different districts went on district improvement plans because of the science results, there is a lot of work to do with science, but that's not to disregard where we need to focus our instruction. And our students did well when we analyzed the different domains in life science. Earth science is certainly something that still needs to be looked at more carefully throughout our curriculum module. But overall, our fifth, eighth, and eleventh graders have, their scores have increased as we look at the growth and above the state average. We're going to go ahead and shift into now the demographic slides. These slides are what we call the subgroup analysis, and these are the slides that the New Jersey Department of Education says every school district in the state of New Jersey must share with the public. So when we look at the subgroup data, we are looking at our subgroup race, we're looking at a subgroup of gender, and we're looking at a subgroup of program. So when we look at the performance of a race and ethnicity, the district continues to monitor achievement gaps. Our white and Hispanic student groups remain the largest cohorts, but Hispanic students demonstrated, they demonstrated some steady growth, but we know there's more that needs to be done. And so as we look at certain, some of these gaps or challenges, we understand that where do we need to target these small groups? Is it in an ESL class? Is it in a tiered three or tier two small group during accelerate? And so we're having those conversations now. As we move, that's, excuse me, that's the subgroup for race. Math. Now the subgroup of science, we, we are looking at how we can identify these subgroups, especially our Hispanic and black populations. We definitely have some work to do with the white population as well as we see that near proficiency. Again, science has four bands below proficiency, near proficient proficiency, and then advanced proficiency. We have aligned our science materials. We have addition, we have bought additional resources so that students have access to science materials that they have not had in the past. And we are just continuing to monitor through assessments. We also have implemented benchmark assessments in science three times a year. So we can also monitor and see the growth of the science standards. The next subgroup is gender and the gender differences continue to mirror what we see in the state and national trends. Female students slightly outperform males in language arts. While we'll see in the math, the male students tend to perform marginally higher in math and science. We're using this data to inform instructional strategies that can help engage our learners. In this case, we did see the females outperforming in math and then the males outperforming in exceeding. And lastly, the last subgroup that we report out on is called program. And this is our English language learners, our free and reduced lunch, our students that have a 504, special education, and then gen educa- general education. We know that our ELL students or English language learner students have the most needs when it comes to our language arts program. Depending on when the student came to the country or in the district is dependent on when and if they have to take the NJSLA. So it is not offered in Spanish for English language arts. They can take it in math based on their WEATA score. So there is a large discrepancy with our English language learners. And that is something that all states and, or excuse me, all districts in the state face. But it's not to say that we don't address it and we aren't doing things we can. We currently adopted in our science curriculum. We bought, purchased the Spanish versions so that they can listen. So students, certain ELL students can listen to the Spanish lessons from the text or in Spanish. So we are able to do that as well as any Spanish materials that we could purchase. So if we could purchase the science material, the student workbook, we did purchase a few student workbooks in math in Spanish for students. And we do use the iXL program that has a science pathway that they can listen to in Spanish. So we're doing what we can to build their science content knowledge and build that general knowledge about science. Because that is something obviously they may not have gotten in a previous district. In our math subgroup, again, we're looking at our Ls or English language learners, free and reduced lunch, our section 504s, special ed and general education. We know that we need to continually look at our special ed population and expose them to grade level material. And this is a shift from what we might have done years ago in the sense of we are exposing them to the reveal curriculum and exposing them to grade level standards with any of the accommodations or modifications needed for the student based on their individual education plan. So we don't, we don't, I hate to use the word, but we don't dumb down the math or dumb down the curriculum. We present the curriculum as it is in our reveal program with any of the supports that are needed based on their IEP. And so we're doing that, obviously, in all. Here's the science for our subgroups. Again, a lot of careful consideration about how we're going to address our L population and our special ed population with the science curriculum. So our real focus here is on student growth. And again, as I said, there, we are more than just one data point. But I did want to focus on some of the things that we are doing and we are consistently evaluating as we look at student growth. So beginning this year, we are implementing benchmark assessments in Linkit three times per year. And the teachers have been, they were trained on what the Linkit platform looks like. And then most recently at our October in-service, Linkit educational consultant came in and met with the teams that gave the assessment. So they could look to see what are the standards, how to run the reports. And we also looked at those at our data meetings. So that is something that we are again, using to help target our instruction in a very quick way. We get those results immediately, similar to the I Ready diagnostic. And I will present all of those results at the spring board meeting. And these benchmark cycles ensure that we're monitoring the cycle of growth. So we give a benchmark, we look at the students' growth, we give it another benchmark in January. We look at the growth and then we can make tweaks. There are different assessments, so it's Form A, B, and C, so we don't give the same assessment. And it is for that time of the year for the grade level according to those standards. So to address the math scores in Algebra One, we are piloting a new program this year at the middle school and high school. We have one middle school Algebra One class and then the Algebra One classes at the high school. The pilot program was something that teachers were part of choosing last spring. We met with consultant, we invited the teachers in, they talked to the consultant, they looked at the materials. They had an opportunity to speak together, meet separately. They, you know, we kind of did a mini focus group and they decided this was a program that they were interested to help with our Algebra One scores. So most recently, they got trained in August with the ed consultant with the program that came out. And then a trainer came back in October to meet with those teachers again. So again, we are providing the resources and we're providing the training. And now we're providing the time in our PLC meetings for the teachers to come together and say, how do I do this? We actually had the middle school Algebra One teacher go and visit and observe the high school Algebra One class so that she could see, you know, what she was seeing in her eighth grade class and compare it to what it looked like in the high school class. And that gave the team something, some additional things to talk about and some more questions to say, how are we making this work? So that is how we're addressing the algebra scores. We're continuing with our data meetings three times a year with any additional meetings scheduled as needed. So if a teacher comes to one of the standards of support teachers and said, or principal or Dr. Miller and says, we have this concern, we would like to have a meeting, absolutely. So the three times a year is the whole school coming together at different times to meet with the team and look at the data. But that's also, we are, know that there are things that change throughout the year and that we can certainly have meetings in between if necessary. Something to note about the middle school alignment. This year we have consistent teachers in five and six and seven and eight. We also have addressed some of the intervention and support needs with having two to three teachers in the classroom. So those of you that attended back to school night may have met a special education teacher that's in your child's class and you may have met a standards with support teacher that's in the class and additionally with the gen ed teacher. And many people know that with our class sizes of less than 20, sometimes even 12 and 13, there's a lot that we can do with that, providing small group instruction and meeting the needs of specific students. We also now at the middle school have intervention specialists at every grade level. So we have teachers that are specifically servicing our ELA, all grade levels and our math, all grade levels. We're going to continue with the high impact tutoring. We're looking at different ways that we can ensure that it is worthwhile and we're getting the students we need and the data we need to support tho- those students and their learning. And we're looking at the accelerate period in the middle school to focus specific skills deficiencies in seventh and eighth grade in ELA and math. So you heard me talk about ratios and proportions and algebraic expressions, geometry and statistics and probability, as well as informational text. Those are going to be the focuses of the seventh and eighth grade accelerate block. And then looking at our benchmark analysis tools and student to track student progress. So what are we looking at with our Linkit benchmarks, our classroom assessments, our reveal benchmarks? And how we're doing on all of those? And I just want to say in closing, first, I want to thank the teachers for all of the work and that they do to support our students. They work tirelessly to, with new schedules, new teams, new curriculum, and how to put it all together because it's quite a puzzle, as you can imagine. And maintain all of the things that they need to maintain smiles for Friday and Halloween that's coming and Red Ribbon Week and all the things that they do, Fun Fridays, Playground, all the things that we do to make it an excellent experience for our students. But I also want to make sure that we focus on student growth and not just proficiency. We are building systems to ensure that every student has the opportunity to grow. It doesn't happen overnight for anyone that's been any part of institutional change. We're doing everything we can, but we know we consistently need to tweak things. But we don't want to change too much because we want to see how it's playing out. Somebody said to me last week, and it was very appropriate for the way I usually think. You know, don't let perfection be the enemy of good. And I was like, oh, right, right. We're doing a lot of really great things here. And so I just want to celebrate that. I want to bring the board's attention to that. I want to make sure that the board, the community, the teachers, administrators know that we're all working together to provide the best possible experience for our students. The redesign at the high school is another way that we're looking at what it looks like to be a graduate here at South Hundred and what kind of skills are we preparing our students for? But yet we understand that the student, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment is something that all schools need to do. And we're going to take the results very seriously, but we're also going to take them as part of a multiple measure. What is it that our students do well? How can we consistently shift that thinking? Thank you.
Questions from the board? On this presentation before we move to my update?
Um, I just, one thing had occurred to me while we were talking about. Thank you for the presentation and all the information that we, that we look at every year. I know it's a lot to go through. But so this, something just occurred to me with our seventh and eighth graders. And I was, you know, thinking back and looking at our fourth grade cohort and I was thinking about those seventh and eighth graders where they were five years ago in COVID. And they were like second, third grade, right? And our fourth graders now who are doing well, they had a pretty typical school year for those grades. So I'm wondering, do we have, do we know, is there any correlation with those, the algebraic concepts, the ratios and proportions? Are there pieces from way back in second and third grade that maybe were missed in, in skills that are now impacting them, you know, in these, in these further grades? And is that something that we can, that we can work at? And then on science, I was wondering, and I know the NJSL has admittedly like given state, right? Everybody doesn't, no one seems to figure out, you know, taking that test. But just science in general, one thought that I had, looking at where we are. And I feel like there's a bit of a difference in this age group and younger age groups that science doesn't feel as hands-on as it used to be. And again, I know I'm going back to when the kids were younger and going through the COVID years. There was a lot of things that we did that were watching YouTube videos and the sci- Bill, you know, the science guy and a lot of things that they watched, right? Because that's what we had to do, but they didn't do hands-on. And I didn't know if, from an edge, you know, somebody with a professional education, are there any correlations there with getting back to doing science hands-on that could maybe show up in, in the way of learning science?
Sure. So to answer your first question, so I can't speak to what math program you were using when those kids were in second and third grade. I do know that the reveal program is up to date with the New Jersey State learning standards. And so those, even those math standards were updated in 2023. The other thing that the standards did years ago, when we initiated the Common Core State Standards and then when we adopted those and then the publishing companies caught up to what that is. The other thing that we see over and over with math scores is modeling and practice. So that is a critical thinking and it is, it's, it's modeling and it's doing math in a very, very different way than traditional math. And if what, so to answer your question, there's been a huge shift in math instruction. So to tie it to what they may not have gotten in third and fourth grade, I don't know. But I do know right here and now, what they don't have, we're addressing. So I don't, I mean, nationally, students since the 2020 have not done as well. But whatever, whether it was COVID in fourth and fifth grade, whether it was inconsistent math programs, we didn't even have reveal. We had illustrative up until last year and we kind of stopped and started with illustrative and it didn't have materials and they were free materials, they weren't ed reports. So I think there was a couple diff- there was some very significant factors that played into the instructional that they got. And so with that, now I feel like we're more on a solid ground. And I also always feel that students, as they grow and develop, they can pick up other concepts that they may have missed. So if you're an eighth grader right now and you may have missed something in fifth or sixth grade, you've got an eighth grade brain now, you should be able to pick that up in a minute. So you may not have had the foundation. It's, but you're going to get it because it's that much quicker and you're that much more developed. So what we need to do right now is we need to figure out where those, what those gaps are, which we have. And then how are we going to put that into the day so that we can close those gaps? And that's really what I look for. The science definitely hands-on, right? I mean, absolutely, we need to make a shift back to using those materials. I do know if in the elementary school, one of the shifts also with science is science shares with social studies, right? Used to, I think it always has, I can't speak to previous schedules. So they do have manipulatives and they are creating those experiments, K four. In fifth through eight, yes, we, in five and six, we have those same kits. So they are using the hands-on. We are looking, next year's focus and the rest of this year is really looking at high school science. And what is it we need and how do we address it? Because it's been a few years since we've looked at curriculum. We've realigned the pathway for science, ninth, 10th and 11th. So that looks a little different as well. And so we know we need to bring those things back in and make sure. But again, when they take this test and a lot of the labs and things, a lot of it is online. So a lot of it is manipulating things online. That's not to say hands-on learning, you know, we're going to throw it out or we're only going to do online, we have to find that balance. So absolutely. Thank you. Mike?
One, I thank you for mentioning that we are going to be realigning science in, in the next year. And I know we've talked about that at curriculum and I do think that that it's important to know that we are doing that with multiple data points, which we, you talked about a lot here. And you also talked about those specific skill sets, which I believe were for our current eighth and ninth, I think you said seventh and eighth. I think you said seventh and eighth.
No, I looked, I looked at the sixth grade results for our seventh and the seventh result for eight, but go ahead.
Are we seeing those, or I, I, I don't know whether you have this on hand, but are we seeing those specific skill sets? Being lacking in every single assessment, are we able to take, to take a look at that and kind of focus our, our eye ready assessments? Um, i- in order to measure that throughout the year? And um, if we're seeing those skill sets consistently come back. Can we look at different measures to really challenge kids with it? Maybe to Jen's point, like having more hands on things of, and crazy AIDS. Maybe that's a club that is going to address some, some of those skill sets of probability that we can't do in the classroom. So can we, can we also look at this in a creative way and for those kids who maybe are need the hands on piece?
Absolutely, absolutely. And another component which many teachers use, but I think there's a conversation we're going, that we're going to have with seven and eighth grade teachers is a component of reveal math called skills, skills review or spiral review. So that you're constantly, every single lesson, there is a practice of skills review. So how do we embed that? Because essentially that's just, because you can't teach geometry all year, right? We know that because you've got algebraic and you've got coordinate plane and you've got slope. And then you've got all kinds of different things. And with math, there are very specific domains and they build on each other. But we can't make it random or it won't make any sense to the kids. But there are ways that we can spiral review every single lesson. And that's something that we need to make sure we're focusing on. Because if students are constant and with reveal and paper pencil and in a small group. So that the teacher knows exactly which one it is and it's easy, you know, oh, they've got these three, right? You don't need to practice spiral review for, I don't know, uh, multiplying and dividing decimals, right? But you do need to practice it for statistics and proportions. So how are we, again, I always think of exposing students to standards and then mastering standards. So it's a couple different exposures before we master something, right? So that's the point of the sta- you know, the stu- the New Jersey Learning Standards is by the end of the year, they should have mastered this. They shouldn't just have been exposed to it. They should have mastered it. So our students are being exposed because the teachers are moving through pacing guides, but have they mastered it? And that's where we need to tighten it up, I think.
I have a question about the charts that you have with the information, the data from twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. When I look at those, I find myself wanting to look at the information on the diagonal, like following the students from say sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade. Is there a reason like? And, but that's not that, that kind of analysis isn't included in your presentation at all. So I'm wondering if there's a reason why it should not be looked at in that way? Or if it's just because, you know, you're just looking at it over time.
Isn't that the bandit?
It was the cohort dat- chart. So we had a cohort chart that I presented to the curriculum committee. It's in here too. Yes, yeah, this, but you have to.
State requires certain ways that we have to present information, but we absolutely look at that for following kids over here. I mean, it's great that we look at third grade, but we also know third grade is two different sets of kids, right? Last year than this year. It's more powerful to look at third grade and how they did the fourth and then, and see their trajectory as they go and where are the areas of people fall.
And there's too many variables. If you take the one chart and go on the diagonal, because there are students that are not included. Their student, right, that they weren't the original cohort. We've had students move. We have students join us. So because we're so small, that data shifts a lot. So I can share with you at the curriculum committee and I can share it with the board as well. We have a chart that had the cohort data and it showed, you know, the cohort growth was forty-three percent. There was a cohort growth that was sixty-four percent. They also, we also pulled out the non-cohort. So those were any students that joined. And so that data is a little bit more exact, um, so to speak, and we can see that over time.
Thank you. And then my other question is, um, I went back and I was trying to look, I know you go back to twenty-three, but I was trying to look, you know, at testing from prior to that. Is twenty nineteen kind of like this, the first time that they, that the data can be compared to what, what's going on now? I know that there wasn't testing done in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, right? Or if there was, it was a different kind of test.
Definitely not.
Was twenty nineteen NJSLA?
Twenty nineteen, then I think in twenty twenty-two, next year.
And then twenty twenty-two, okay. All right, thank you.
So I just got one question and it's really more of a statement because a- as much as we are looking at this at high level as the board, um, I, I just want to make sure that to Gina's point right here. We can look at it both as parents and our educators can look at this to watch mobility for a single child as they move through. And, and that's really the, where we're trying to get to.
I was thinking every time we do these presentations, I learn a lot more about the assessment itself. And I was very happy to hear, I know that NJSLA doesn't make accommodations for, for children with IEPs or, and have, um, like don't have the special needs um, accommodations and for kids with limited English proficiency. They don't provide that in, in their native language. Um, but it sounds like what we're doing, um, that's more meaningful is when they're studying for it. We're providing those accommodations. We're, we're giving it to them in Spanish. And that to me sounds like we're, we're doing the right thing and trying to instruct them. It's unfortunate that then when they're assessed, it isn't taking their needs into, into account. Um, but hearing that that's, that's something that's happening. And these benchmarks that we're doing regularly and the reports that you're doing regularly, I think are, you know, we've, we've learned a lot from those. And in a lot of ways, those are more meaningful and that will become even more important with as NJSLA moves to the adaptive and we're going to have a hard time comparing next year's data to previous years. So, you know, the more, the more we put, and I, we talked about it in curriculum and we talked about in the school community and I'll mention it later. But that, you know, as we build goals, really looking at not just NJSLA, not just I ready. There's a lot of different ways that we can measure student achievement. And um, so I look forward to that and always look forward to the data meetings because they feel more meaningful. As we, and we, as we grow and as we also get more specific in terms of the way that we use data, it's very, um, it's exciting. I mean, to hear about ratios and proportions and things like that. And like Michael said, there are creative ways that we could, you know, when we identify that there's an area that, that students need more support. There are programs that we could allocate resources to, to make sure that specific um, cohorts are receiving instruction that is specific to the identified need. So.
I have one more question. Sorry. It's about the adaptive test. Just, so when you first said that it was going to be an adaptive test. I assumed it was going to be given in the same way it is now, like once a year. But that the format of the test was going to be adaptive. But then you said something that made me think that maybe it was going to be given more than once and throughout the year. So I just want to, is it, do you know?
Yes, for the NJSLA, it will just be the spring.
Okay.
We're doing the field test next week, which is.
Yes, I know that. No, I meant like after this year.
Well, honestly, I don't, I honestly don't have any idea.
No, you don't.
We don't know.
Because they threw start strong in the fall after COVID.
Right.
And we didn't know that was coming and we had, so we had two assessments that year. Questions?
All right, we're changing gears on some other topics. Um, just some things I wanted to give an update on as part of my update. Uh, the first thing I wanted to say is, if you haven't noticed, our new playground is in at the middle school. So I really want to give a shout out. I posted this on Facebook to our maintenance staff. Um, because they installed the new playground. So we got about a year, year and a half ago. We applied for a grant from the local recreation improvement and we received seventy-four thousand dollars. And all the equipment you see in those pictures were purchased with that seventy-four thousand dollars. But then we got a quote for installation, which was, and I actually got this wrong in my Facebook posts, because I put fifty thousand. I actually drilled into this a little bit more and I had found the original quote, it was eighty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars to do the installation. So that was to dig everything out, you know, drill the holes, concrete, put all the equipment together, the mulch, the whole nine yards of everything we did. So our maintenance staff worked on this for about two weeks. It's up and running. Obviously the kids were excited. I've seen one already. So big kudos and shout out for our maintenance staff for saving us a considerable amount of money on their projects. Um, and now they moved on to the next project, which is the batting cage and the softball dugouts for the new softball. Um, so I did want to mention this. Um, many of you hopefully are aware that we sold the West Amwell School on Wednesday, October eighth. Uh, for one point two million dollars at public auction. Uh, the buyer for the property's name is Orlando Velate and he's from Addendale, New Jersey. Um, the closing is actually scheduled for Friday next week on November seventh. Um, after the closing costs, the proceeds uh, from the sale will be about one point one million dollars. Uh, I just wanted to say that in conversations with the board, um, it's committed to using proceeds from the sale to pay down referendum debt, provide relief to our taxpayers. And the board is currently researching the best way to do this. Um, if you're not aware, the bonds that we purchased for the two thousand and twenty-one referendum do have a callback date of July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-nine. Well, what does that mean? That means that when we settle next thir- or next Friday for the West Amwell School and we get one point one million dollars deposited into our account, we can't just turn around and write a check for one point million dollars to pay off the debt. It doesn't work that way because I asked for the IRS. We're not allowed to do that. Um, however, the board is still committed using proceeds to pay down debt. So we are looking at some different options, which we'll share in greater detail next month, once we actually close and pack the money. Um, we, in our finance committee meeting last week, our auditor joined us and kind of laid out some different options for us. Um, of what we can do in order to utilize proceeds to pay off referendum debt. So at our meeting in November, by that time we will have closed on the property and then we'll share as part of my update, more detailed on how the board's going to go about doing that. All right, um, just a few other things to mention, um. So on the agenda tonight, and we'll probably talk about this a little bit when we get to finance. But we do have a contract for approval with Hunter Behavioral Health. Asked for a grant from the New Jersey Department of Ch- Children and Family Services or Veterans and PCF. So basically just to give you a little bit of history, Hunter Behavioral Health reached out to me in the month of August. With interested in partnering with our school district, specifically our high school, who a grant that they receive. Um, they've been providing services for area high schools within the county for over twenty years. Uh, we were not one of them actually, so they decided that they want, they had an opportunity and they decided to reach out to us. So we had several meetings with them just to kind of get an overview of what they would be able to provide. Again, this grant is geared specifically toward high school students. So when we initially had conversations, we did talk to them about, isn't there any possibility we could expand it? The middle school, just because we are the only K twelve district in Hunter County. All the other high school districts are standalone districts. But unfortunately, looking at that as far as counseling services, they were not able to do that as per the way the grants were written with PCF. Um, so what we decided to do is get creative. And what we will get out of this is we will get one mental health clinician that would be at the high school four days a week and be able to support our high school students. We will also get a youth development coordinator. So what they came around to after much discussion is that the youth development coordinator could support programming both at the high school and at the middle school. So although they couldn't do for the grant individual counseling with middle school students, they could do programming. So you see some examples there, whether it's parent education programs, wellness fair, staff training, student programming. Um, those are all things that they would organize and this individual will be responsible for from a programming side of things. Um, they will also be with us four days a week. Um, they can do group counseling of high school students. So we've talked about different groups and examples could be students who've experienced, you know, grief or a loss in their life. Dealing with maybe perhaps parents who are going through a divorce, social skills, things along those lines. This individual could utilize their skills to have roots depending upon what our student needs are. Um, and then there's also a program coordinator, which kind of provides oversight for the whole program and make sure all the paperwork and everything that needs to be filed with PCF to maintain the grant. That's a major part of their responsibility. The program coordinator also has the ability to take on a caseload of about ten students if need be. The um, mental health clinician has the ability to take on a caseload of about twenty-five students if, if need be. So the important thing here is, and this is even before COVID. I know that mentioned that, I know we don't like to mention that word anymore. But the reality is student mental health needs have been increasing for years, right? Each and every year and our teachers, I see them in the audience shaking their heads. Um, students come to us each and every day with a lot of things that they're dealing with. And it goes down as early as elementary school, right? Things that maybe in the past we've seen more with maybe eighth or ninth grade, we're now seeing in fourth and fifth grade. So obviously we're responsible for that, right? We're not just here about teaching math and, and language arts. We have to develop the whole child and support the whole child. It's important that we have those resources to be able to do that. So this is a huge help to us because what it'll allow us to do is to take some of our support that we have in-house from our folks at the high school. And then move them down to utilize the word elementary and more specifically at the middle school. Which tends to be a very challenging time for students, right? Grades five, three, eight can be a roller coaster ride of emotional development, you know, and the way things go as far as that lesson goes. So by having these services to kind of be able to fill the high school needs, it provides us to reallocate resources. So we can provide even more support for our middle school students. And the other piece that's good about Hunter Behavioral is that oftentimes, one of the most challenging things that we deal with is when students have a higher level of care. So if a student unfortunately might need, you know, an inpatient or an outpatient program. And how do we find those places? And any parent who's ever dealt with that with a child knows that that is not easy to do. Typically beds are full. There's nowhere to go. You kind of keep going from place to place. Insurance is a major issue, right? Who takes the insurance? Who doesn't? They may have an open bed, but they don't take insurance. So what do I do as a parent? Hunter Behavioral can help navigate that process for our students that need that type of care. And they also, as they've done with some other high school districts, can allocate some beds in the facilities that they work with to hold for South Hundred in the event that we have a student that may need inpatient treatment. Instead of the student kind of knowing they need help, wanting to help, but there's nowhere to go, we can help bridge that gap. So, um, you know, it's on our agenda tonight for approval. It's free. I don't think I mentioned that. Out of everything I said, it is free to us. So the next steps for us would be that, um, we would, they have to hire the mental health clinician and the youth development coordinator. So they will work on that with the goal of having those individuals in place by January one. And the program coordinator is ready to go. So that individual will probably start as early as sometime in November and start getting things off the ground. Getting ready for the folks that will be coming on again. So I am excited about this. I put here our little visual, um, of our strategic plan because this absolutely fits in one of our goals, which is helping wellness for our students. Providing support for our students. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Um, so that, that's an exciting thing that we're, you know, we're excited about. So I mentioned this as part of my September update and our goals, right? We, we, we mentioned that the high school is really going to be a focus to redesign so our students are future ready. By really looking at developing personalized college and career pathways. Um, this is a strategic plan goal. Again, if we look at our little visual here, the top one is student experience. So what type of student experience are we providing for high school students? It's got to look different than it does now. So what I will tell you, since the last time we met, we've had some exciting opportunities to visit some other school districts. Not in the state of New Jersey, and I'll explain why, but the state of Pennsylvania. To take a look at what else is happening out there as far as the type of experiences students are having in high school. So as I mentioned, we, we got it, we got to do something different, right? What we've done in education with the high school students is no longer as meaningful that needs to be. Um, so on our journey of designing a new experience for the high school, we visited two different districts. We visited back on September twenty-nine, New Hope-Soulberry High School. And then we did a visit with Quakertown High School on Thursday, October twenty-third, last Thursday. Why are we visiting Pennsylvania high school, school, schools? Um, what I will say is. Um, what I will say is Pennsylvania has a much more rigorous. College and career readiness graduation requirement compared to New Jersey. So New Jersey, well, you'll hear all the buzzwords about exposing students to college and career readiness. But there's not a lot of doing, in my opinion, right? And you'll see what I, what I mean in a second. So in Pennsylvania, it's actually a graduation requirement. So students have to demonstrate college and career readiness in order to graduate from high school. And what that means is each high school in Pennsylvania is required to have what's called a career pathways program. That provides students with real life experiences connecting the classroom to future careers through internships. Job shadowing, industry partnerships, and hands-on projects aligned to their area of interest. In other words, students are leading school and going out and getting experience in the work world. To see what they actually want to do when they leave the district. Which is not obviously something that a lot of high schools, quite honestly, in New Jersey are doing right now. So when we dig into New Hope specifically. What we found out is they basically have three pathways, it's called art of humanities, business and communication, health science, steam and innovation. Each pathway has a course sequence that students follow throughout their high school experience. So students at New Hope don't declare a pathway until their sophomore year. They can move to different pathways, right? It's not like you declare a pathway and then you're stuck for the rest of your time. Depending upon the student experience, they have flexibility and can move to different pathways. What the requirements are is in ninth grade, all students are required to take a college and career course. That's a semester-based course. In that course, they learn about things like the college process, the application process. The cost, student loans. How to balance all that information about what it means to go to college and have to carry perhaps debt when you come out of school. Resume writing skills, interviewing skills. And they also get exposure to a certain extent of careers, even in an early as in ninth grade. In tenth grade, they make a selection of a pathway and during that time they're exposed to guest speakers that come in. Each month to talk about different careers that students have interest in. So in other words, depending upon what pathway you pick, there's a whole set of speakers for that pathway. And as students, you're exposed to that throughout the entire school year. Again, as you try to make a connection of, gee, I'm really interested in business. Let me go to these guest speakers and see what it's all about of a student, of individual who's worked in business, started their own business. An entrepreneur, whatever it may be, that's what that looks like. And then also targeted trips where students in each pathway are taken out to actual places of industry to kind of take a look at. What that looks like for real. In eleventh grade, students are required to do twenty hours of a job shadow with a community pathway partner. So they have developed community pathway partners, local businesses, hospitals, all kinds of different things. Where they've established these relationships where a student is required to go out during that time and report back. And there's a process for them to do that on twenty hours of what that experience was like. All right? And that's a precursor to the senior year where then they have to go out and do a three-week sixty-hour internship. In a professional setting with again their community pathway partners. And then their experience is shared in a presentation at the end of the year with all the underclassmen who are interested in going into that pathway. All right? So depending upon what their pathway is. And this is a graduation requirement, in other words, if a student doesn't complete the sixty hours, doesn't do the presentation, they're not able, able to graduate. And the presentation is evaluated by a panel of educators from the building and each pathway has different educators. Who evaluate those presentations, so again. The theory here is that students are getting out, they're getting experience in the areas of interest. And they're finding out, answering a lot of questions before they actually either A, go to college. Or B, perhaps go into a career route out of high school, whether it's a trade or whatever it may be. That's important, right? Because you would rather find that out during your high school experience. Rather than later on when you maybe wasted a lot of time and money in that process. As we look at Quakertown, it's even more intensive, I'll say. So they have actually more pathways, business, marketing, finance, arts and humanities, education, which I love. STEM and computer science, and then they have an undeclared. So they may have students early on who don't know what they want to do and want to dabble a little bit in everything to kind of get a better idea of what this looks like. Each pathway has a core sequence that students follow throughout the high school experience. So as an incoming ninth grader. You have an idea of kind of what you like, you're going to get exposed to a lot of things. And then in tenth grade, you're going to make your career, your career pathway selection. And the counselor is going to say to you, here's the courses sequentially that you're going to take in tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade. To meet the requirements that pathway, depending upon what pathway it is. So you know kind of laid out exactly what that looks like. Now in ninth grade, what they do is they bring all of their ninth grade students together once a month. And they have two pathway coordinators, which is really like their full-time job. And within that setting, they begin to get that instruction in employability, soft skills. Course, course planning, exposure to all the different pathways that are listed above and the different careers that are in those pathways. So that is in ninth grade, in tenth grade, they then have what's called a pathway advisory. So every teacher gets in the building and they have about, they have about sixteen hundred students, so about four hundred at a grade level, so obviously much bigger than us. Every teacher gets assigned to then fifteen students that are going to be there in what's called their pathway advisory. And that teacher is literally continuing to check in with those students. They have time built in their schedule where they meet to see where they are in the requirements that they need to do during their sophomore year. Junior year and senior year to meet these graduation requirements as far as exposure in the field that they're interested in. In eleventh grade. They do two twenty-hour field placements, one each semester. With a community partner matched to students. So in Soulberry, New Hope-Soulberry, they did this sixty hours at the end of their senior year. Now what we're saying with this program is they're actually starting their junior year. Right? So they have time built into their schedule and there's flexibility. If students want to do it during the school day, there's a way to do it that way. If a student wants to do it after school hours, on the weekend, whatever it is, there's total flexibility. It's totally up to the student, depending upon the relationship that they have with their career pathway partner. The student and the advisors from the program actually work together to build that pathway partner. Right? If a student really wants to be an attorney and they have someone they know that works in an attorney's office and is an attorney and they can develop that partnership. Great. If they can't, then the school's going to get involved and they're going to work with some of the connections they have. And you'll see in a second, just some examples of all the different things and partners that Quakertown specifically has. In twelfth grade, you have to do four twenty-minute field placements, so one per marking period with a community partner. All right? So that's pretty amazing, right? So think about it, by the time you get to graduation, you have done six placement. Two in junior year and four in senior year. They told great stories of students who said, I have known since third grade that I want to be an attorney. I know where I'm going to go to college and I know where I'm going to law school. And they went out and did that twenty hours and said, I am never going to be an attorney ever again. They're not organized, I'm type A, it drove me nuts every day when I went there. I am doing something different and that student is now in radiology. Right? But again. Something that resonated that was pretty powerful is the advisor said, what we constantly preach to parents is, we're all about saving time and money. To students and parents, and what does that mean? That means we don't want to see your child go through four years of college thinking they know what they want to do. And then they don't and they graduate and then they're looking at you like, what do I do now? Cause I don't really like the major or the career that I thought I wanted to go into. And parents may have had that experience already, you know what I'm talking about. This is an opportunity to really vet out a lot of different experiences to know that by the time you leave. And again, for some of our students, it might be, hey, I'm going to, I want to be an HVAC technician, I need a certification. What is that going to look like? We have the polytech program, we have different options. So when they finish school, they hit the ground running and they're working, they have a certification and they're ready to go, right? Now's the time to find that out, not necessarily when you get in college. Students in grades nine to twelve are also able to all four grade levels they have. And when I send this out, there's a link, they store it right through YouTube, they have on their website. All these presenters that have come in, a lot of them, quite honestly, are alumni, former graduates and have done all kinds of awesome stuff. You'll, you know, you'll hear on some of them that I watched, hey, this is so and so from the class of two thousand eight and they're here today. Talking about how to be a filmmaker and this, that and the other. So kids get to sign up depending upon their area of interest to go to these pathway career expos. Uh, with these individuals, which is really, really cool. Just a couple more things I'll share, so this is just an example of like the different folks that they've established relationships with. So like, we saw, right, pictures in the room that we were in of students, literally. There was one student who spent an entire week in shop with a physician. They went through the, the entire process of pre-op, surgery, post-surgery, like, that is pretty incredible. Right? But those are the types of experiences that they're developing for their, for their kids to be able to get some experience with that. Um, this is another, I kind of, you know, stole this just, so from the education side, they're doing this in-house, right? So they have students who want to be teachers, so as part of their process, they're working with teachers in the district. So for maybe their first twenty hours, they're going to go down and spend twenty hours with a third grade teacher. See what that's like, maybe for their next twenty hours, they're going to go to middle school and maybe now it's in special education. Then they're going to go to high school, in essence, they're doing quasi-student teaching before they even get to college. Right? So again, an awesome way to figure out. And they told stories where, you know, Johnny Jones said, I want to be a third grade teacher. And then Johnny Jones went to third grade for twenty hours and said, there is no way I can do that every day for the next thirty years. I have to figure out something else I need to do, so again, getting that experience. Um, I stole this, so this was, you know, our, our buddy Cole Maffini, you can, if you look closely. I did a field study with Dr. Fane, Dr. Jimmy at May Dental. I tip, you know, what kind of work did you do? I typically oversee procedures done at the office, helping prepare the tools and materials needed. What was your most memorable experience? I would say observing the extraction. There's a set of steps for each process regarding the procedure, what have you learned? I've learned how to prepare certain procedures and what skills are needed. Um, that being a dentist requires great communication skills, your future plans, I hope to attend University of Pittsburgh for biochemistry. And to go to dental school post-grad. So again, like, I mean, that's a pretty amazing experience for a student to get at the high school level. Um, so our next steps, uh, and again, when we went, we had a group, myself, Jane Allen, um, our principal Adam Wright. Jason Miller, who's the vice principal, we brought both our counselors, Fay Peterson and Dana Keck. And then when we went to Quakertown last week, we brought two of our teacher clubs as well. We are working on one more visit in Pennsylvania that we'll hopefully nail down in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we have a high school staff committee that's working on this, taking all this information and. Making decisions on what would be the best fit for our high school. Could we incorporate aspects from all of our visits, depending upon what fits? We are going to develop a five-year plan for implementation. We will continue to provide board and community updates throughout the year and our goal is to start year one next fall. Right? So there'll be some component next fall, what this looks like. And it's one of the reasons why, hopefully you've been paying attention. Over the last month, I sent out a Google form about community classroom partners. Right? Folks who might be interested in coming in and talking about how their, um, field and what they do for their career relates to our curriculum. That database would be really important moving forward because maybe we have someone who likes to come in and talk about. You know, this in relation to math, depending upon they're an engineer. But then maybe the next step is, would you be interested in maybe taking a student for an internship time, twenty hours? You know, and what that looks like and realize like. When we went to Quakertown, they were very specific, like, this is not about students going to an experience. And like, hey, go make copies for me or go, no, 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 this is like real life hands-on. They have to report back all the things they do, rely specifically related to this career. And their supervisor that they're working with has to sign all, and there's awesome skills because just like all of us as adults, right? They're in a placement and then maybe they're coming back saying to their, you know, pathway coordinator, I don't really like my balls. Right? And it's like, okay, how are we going to navigate that, right? Like, that's real life. You know, the, the answer is you have to go back tomorrow, right? You can't say, I'm going to do something else. You got to try to work through and problem solve because these are real life skills as an adult and people deal with each and every day and what that looks like. Um, so more to come, um, just really excited about it. Uh, I think everyone in the community walked away saying, this is what our kids should be doing, right? As part of their high school experience. Like I said, I think the thing that separates us right now from other New Jersey schools is that a lot of them have pathway programs. But they don't have the experience of going out into the community and doing things. The closest thing to it is probably the vocational schools who have like CTE certifications and things like this. But other than that, right now, for whatever reason, New Jersey doesn't really have this piece and it's probably because it's not a requirement gradually. Where in Pennsylvania, I think it's been in place since two thousand eighteen. So each district we've gone to is at different phases of this, um, so, you know, and they are required. And not only have it, but they have to document to the state of what students are doing in order to earn that, you know. And they get credits for it, right? They get credits. They go out, they're not getting paid, but they get credits towards graduation. So again, very exciting stuff, um, we'll continue to provide updates. Obviously, our staff here will play a major role in what the development and what it looks like. And we're fortunate to know where we are between right here in Lamerville, across the bridge in New Hope, Mercer County is close, Hunter County. We've got a lot of resources of folks that we can kind of tap into in a variety of different ways to help us with this program. Any questions from the board?
I did just want to make one comment, um. Rewinding all the way back to the beginning with the playground equipment, uh, first to thank our custodial staff for, for getting that involved, um. But also I happened to take a trip to Hewitt Park today to pick up, um, a, my middle school soccer player. And, um, was very happy to see that the equipment that was once at West Hamwell School. That we donated to West Hamwell Township is being installed at Hewitt. This, I don't know whether it's this week, but it is definitely, um, in existence. Um, and for those of you who don't know, um, some of the pieces from the, the kitchen and also the playground equipment from West Hamwell. Um, was donated to West Hamwell Township by, by our board, um, so that it can live on there and our children can continue to use it.
Thank you for bringing it up.
This is really my first, first of all, I think the career pathways. Presentation this gave is really great, very exciting for the district, um. I also wanted to go back to the beginning though, to the school-based services program, the parent education programs. Um, just kind of going back to our student board, you know, you were talking about cell phone usage. I think a really great parent education service that they can provide is. Educating parents about cell phone usage and kids, what's appropriate. Um, you know, social media, you know, don't, you know, shouldn't be given a phone up in their bedroom by themselves late at night. A lot of mental health, um, issues come from that. But also maybe if, if that takes hold, we won't have to, you know. Give a carrot to take kids off their phone in between classes at the high school and at lunch. It's a little easier.
No other questions? We will enter the first period of public comment. So as a reminder, before we start public comment, we have procedures and requirements that include standards of conduct that need to be followed by members of the public. During public comments, if a member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during any period or public comment. The member of the board charged with running the public meeting shall warn the disruptive number of public. That continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during the public meeting or removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behavior such as, but not necessarily limited to, shouting, interruption and use of profanity or comments seen as abusive and seen for contempt. So members in public are invited to come to the podium. We just ask that you, um, state your name and your municipality and that you keep your, um, questions or comments to three minutes.
He went at the very beginning.
You can go, by the way, I'm all at bar.
Yeah, I just was seeing when someone was going to tell me to leave. Sorry, Bill. It was interesting presentation.
Yeah, yeah.
His, his perspective on that. Thanks, little bit.
I, I just had a question about the. A high school redesign.
Can you state your name and your municipality?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joan Vanderveen, West Hamwell Township. I've been talking to people around town and. There are several people that think the redesign has to do with. Construction. So I, I like to get the word out when I talk to people that it's not redesigned. I don't know if there's a better phrase I could use. Because the program that you're talking about is, is amazing. And it's not.
Maybe the word redesigned.
Well, if you're, it's the experience.
That's true.
You know, I think it's getting shortened to high school redesign, but it's not a high school.
Well, especially after the middle school was just built, then the reaction to the idea of redesign has, has. Well, especially after the middle school was just built, then the reaction to the idea of redesign has, has not been positive.
Okay.
So.
Close this period of public comment, there will be another comment at the end. And we will launch the report, starting with curriculum and technology.
So the curriculum and technology committee met on October 15th at 6:00 PM at the high school. Um, Mr. Gallagher was not able to make it, but, uh, the remainder of our committee was able to get it. Um, along with Mr. Sefeli, Ms. Lennon and, um, Mr. Suzo. For technology, we did talk about the arbiter facility schedule, um, and that training was happening, uh, that is another piece of our community outreach in that we are trying to make it easier for our community to use our new facilities. Um, and Arbiter is hopefully going to allow us to do that. And, um, the athletic schedule will also be integrated there, um, in, in the hopes that, that will help us to understand the athletic schedule a little better. Anyone who's had to explore that as well. They were continuing at that time to work through any beginning of the year systems issues. Um, and, um, Vince, as I'm sure the rest of everyone in the audience, um, knows is that this is October is, um, cyber, cyber security month, sorry. Um, so we were implementing our know before campaign and, um, I have gotten that in multiple aspects in, in my several jobs. Um, but our staff, um, has been doing that over the course of this month. And, um, also that our middle school AV was finally finished. Uh, Ms. Lennon talked about the October 13th Professional Development Day, um, and focused on, um, timing with, working with grade levels and cohorts, um, as, as we talked about a little bit earlier. Uh, there is data analysis happening at grade levels, um, now. And as I also just pointed out, that allows them to talk not only about strategies for the whole classroom, but strategies for individual kids as they are, are able to talk amongst each other. Uh, they did have breakout sessions, um, so Lincoln Training happened for grades four and up. The Algebra One Pilot Training Program, um, and, uh, included our ESL and special ed teachers who would be teaching it. And, um, there was training with the gym projector and the active floor at the elementary level. There was also wellness sessions for our staff, um, which was very popular last year. And, uh, it wasn't noted, but the PTO did provide healthy snacks for, for our staff throughout the day. And I know that they were very appreciative. We talked about the career pathways program, um, I, I'm not going to repeat most of that. Um, but I did want to say that our goal is to have something in place for our ninth graders entering next year. Um, and that we would have a phased-in approach with the, um, redirection maybe is the word to use. So, but, um, we also talked about AI. Um, the superintendent's council met on 10/15, that is the teachers meeting with Mr. Suzo. And, um, they'll be doing a survey both to students and to staff to talk about AI usage. And, um, we also spoke about, about some of the AI, um, learning that they had been doing as an ad admin team as well. I did just want to take a moment to, to point out here in, in, um, both the AI and also in the high school redesign program, uh, there is a staff committee involved, and that is one of our goals as a board for the next year. Um, so it's really great that that is being folded in right away. Uh, we talked about the achievement report, um, which we went into very, very, um, deeply there and, um, did review all of the required information that was needed in there, but also the best way to kind of take that required information and make it a little bit simpler, um, as best as that could happen. And, um, then finally, Ms. Lennon did inform us that, um, parent communication would be going out for the New Jersey Universal Literacy Screening Law. Um, and that would include DIBELS test results, I-ready test results and NJSLA test results. Um, and the hope was that they would all be arriving at the same time so that parents would get a cohesive look at how their child was doing. Uh, that is legally required in the state of New Jersey. Um, but it is coming right in time also since we have, uh, since we have parent and teacher conferences coming up next week. So.
Is the Algebra Pilot, uh, new vendor curriculum or is it just?
It's currently happening. Yeah.
Is it a new then, another, like a new program?
Yeah.
Other questions?
Uh, personnel committee met on October 22nd. It was virtual meeting. Um, at the meeting, Tony advised the committee of personnel appointments, resignations and other actions that are on the agenda this evening. Additionally, the, by the committee of extracurricular stipend appointments for the 25th of the sixth school year that are on the agenda. And finally, the committee, um, discussed was advised of a personnel issue. Uh, and with that, I would like to move on to the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Uh, Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Discussion.
Any discussions?
Uh, Gina Vashetti.
Yes.
Brian He. And Ken Goldletti, Hapton, Karen O'Leary, Hapton, uh, Michael Stroud.
Yes.
Uh, Jennifer Bachelor.
Yes.
Uh, Ronnie Tomarino.
Yeah.
And Jim Dollar.
Thanks to have all of us here. Okay, we met on October 8th virtually. We're going to stick to the theme, which is the use of electronic communication devices. Uh, this is a change to a policy, the policy is mandatory and change is not mandatory. It's a reprise of the current policy with new, new provisions prohibiting or limiting the use of electronic communication devices during the school day and providing a more comprehensive list of devices covered. The existing policy focuses more on audio and video recording. Um, that will be kept running into the slight redesign of the policy to make it clearer and make those two distinctive areas. The real focus is on the new regulation, which is, which is really the, the, the meat of it, and it is new. The regulation provides the board with two options, one, which is to strictly prohibit student use of electronic communication devices. The other is to permit student use during certain times of the day or certain locations. And the board has, because there is not actually a state statute that addresses this board, that's a certain amount of flexibility. Sign a program that works for us. And the policy, policy committee recommends that use be prohibited in elementary school and middle school. And use by high school students should be limited to lunchtime, on the bus, during passing time between classes. Will assist it with the current practice today, high school students will place their devices in a designated location during class time. Devices must be turned off and pass code protected. And students should not be contacting their, contacting their parents during a time when a device is prohibited. From it, there is now going to be in the regulation, a specific discipline that is set forth, which is new. It will be progressive for the first offense, the student has to turn in the device. It's got up at the end of the day for second offense, a parent must come in. Appropriate acknowledgements will receive to the device will be required. On the third offense, um, in high school, that will be an hour of detention, a fourth offense. But fourth offense will be extended detention and their offenses beyond that may lose the ability to have their device at school or at district programs. For our second item in first read, we have a policy 5111, which is the eligibility of, um, resident and non-resident students, um, to attend the district without paying tuition. This is a mandatory change that should change the aim as a role there, as a result of clarifying comments by the State Board of Education related to a particular state statute. And it now requires that the district charge tuition for students that had not have previously been not required to do so, including students of non-certificated staff, families moving in and out of the district and F1 and J1 visa holders. This is challenging for our district because being a choice district prohibits us from charging tuition to any student. So we have to thread the needle between what we're required to do for this mandatory change. We do have flexibility when it comes to our certified staff, those are our teachers, anybody who has a certificate issued by a state board examiners, including school nurses and athletic trainers. We can allow that their, they are non-district residents, we can allow their students to attend without charging them tuition. And we're going to continue to do that best they approach what you take today. Where we do not have flexibility is for non-certificated or non-teaching staff members. Now today, the district does not have any uh, staff in this category that has students in the district, so it's not an issue for us today. But we do not have the option of charging, of allowing their students to attend without charging tuition. Um, that this is in conflict with our collective bargaining agreement at the moment, but once the policy is final, it will take precedence over that collective bargaining agreement. Um, so to the extent this comes up in the future, we are not going to allow those students to attend unless they go lottery for the choice program. Uh, for student movers, you may recall that we addressed this in April of 2024, um, to allow students that are moving into the district who are a parent as a contractor, purchase a house or to rent for a period of eight weeks, we allow them to attend without charging tuition. We are not allowed to do that, but we are recommending that they be treated as unfunded students at the choice program. So that would basically continue what we're doing today. And for seniors, um, or for students who are leaving the district. If it is for students who are not seniors, if it's in March, they can continue to stay in the district until the end of the year. For seniors, for the entire senior year, we would allow them to stay. And again, we are recommending treating them as unfunded choice students to maintain what we had agreed to back, uh, in April of last year. For the visa students, this is not going to be a significant change for us for the F1 visa holders, which is a typical education visa. We do not permit them to attend today without paying tuition, so that is not a change. For exchange, uh, students, which is the J1 visa holders. Um, and Tony, do we have any exchanged students?
We don't. Okay.
Um, and similar to the movers, we would suggest treating them as, um, unfunded choice students. Um, so those are our two, um, first reads on our second reads, and I won't go through each of these, but you have them in the agenda. These are minor changes that are made to a series of policies related to legal services, professional services, uh, internal controls, budget preparations, and the special education Medicaid initiative to align the, um, policy in certain cases, the regulation to administer changes to the administrative code that remain. But none of them are material changes. Um, and so with that, I would like to leave.
Second?
I have one comment that I'd like to make, and it's specifically about the one Martha was talking about. Policy 5111, eligibility residents and non-resident students. So this has caused a lot of, uh, frustration among the state, uh, in different districts. Um, I'm not in favor in the fact that our non-certificated staff, also our, um, least paid employees are not allowed to bring their kids in district if they don't live here. Uh, I don't think that's fair and I don't agree with it. Uh, from everything we're gathering, this really wasn't a well thought out change. A big emphasis of this was that athletics. So evidently there was some districts where they were hiring, whether it was a paraprofessional custodians or their child could come to the district and play football or soccer or whatever it may be. And then this was the way that our folks decided to handle that, but didn't realize the ramifications. So a lot of districts, um, had voiced concerns about this, especially choice districts. So the hope is eventually they'll consider a change, but I just wanted to kind of put on the record that I don't feel this is fair for our non-certificated staff.
Other questions?
Uh, Brian He. Uh, Ken Goldletti, Hapton, Aaron O'Leary, Hapton, Michael Stroud.
Yes.
Uh, Jennifer Bachelor.
Yes.
Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Gina Vashetti.
Yeah.
Ronnie Tomarino.
Yes.
Jim Dollar.
Bill Thompson.
Um, so just some things we talked about, obviously I mentioned during my update, sale of West Amwell and utilizing proceeds for debt relief. Uh, we also just gave an update on the field turf. So last, uh, Tuesday, I guess it was, we did a cursing courtesy review with the land use, uh, land use, uh, board at West Amwell Township. Uh, we presented the project to them, uh, they made some recommendations and then, uh, voted and agreed on a resolution that we met the requirements of the courtesy review. So the next step is we had two outstanding items with DRCC, which we've been going kind of back and forth with them since August when we first applied for our permit. Uh, we submitted the last two things that they were looking for last Thursday. So we're waiting to hear back. Their next meeting is on November 19th. So if all goes well, we would get approval on the 19th and then the project would start immediately right after that. With the goal line of having it completed for the spring athletic season, just because obviously we know that we have some folks that are required to go off-site because of field space. And if we have the turf, that would no longer be the case. And salt hole in particular at the middle school level, if we stay here for their needs and practice. We talked about that. Um, school construction update, so you know, we're in the final stages of the middle school. You'll notice on the, uh, agenda tonight, we have a pay app for Ernest Bach, who was our contractor for the middle school. We, and there's a couple of change orders on there as well, but there are zero base change orders, meaning that we had allowances left from soil and rock removal that we did not use, so they were put towards that, so it's a zero balance. Um, we're hoping that at our November meeting, we'll have our final payment app to wrap up the 58 building construction with Ernest Bach. Uh, which would be exciting. We also have on there, uh, you'll notice the final HVAC for the elementary school. And that was funded, a portion of it through rod grants that we received from the state. So although there's a payment on there, the rod grant that we're receiving from the state will be utilized to make that payment. Um, contracts we talked about, the biggest one we mentioned was Hunter behavioral health. Um, and we also have to approve a budget calendar for next year, but with obviously the governor's election coming up and depending upon how that goes, as much of the calendar is on there tonight, that could get shifted around. Cause typically when there's a new governor, go a lot more time than they typically would get when they're in office. For more time to kind of figure things out because it'll be starting in January. So typically the bu- budget address for the governor is at the end of February, beginning of March. That could potentially get pushed out further, uh, so we'll kind of keep folks posted on that. And then we also have a comprehensive meeting plan, plan that we have on the agenda for approval. Although I will say our long range facility plan is now due to be, um, revised. It's something we have to do every five years and our five-year plan expires in July of 26. So we will be working on that in the spring with our architect, um, and then bringing that back to our finance committee and then eventually to board.
So. Any questions?
I have a question about the, the Congress, uh, getting plans. But what does the building replacement that you call actually mean?
It's something with the hat in the building where we got it. Caught on fire or something on the news line. That's a document with our insurance company of just what would be overall replacement calls.
So it's based on that 142 and that's what that's the number that the state set. And then it's the square foot into the building. And that has this.
Which we all know, and I'll just acknowledge it, that 143 per square foot has been that way for 30 years. And we all know it's a heck of a lot more expensive. It's more about 500 square foot.
Really what that plan does is to set the minimum, uh, the maximum amount rather that you can have in your, uh, maintenance reserve or below that, so we're buying, but if it's a plan that has to come annually.
Questions?
Uh, Brian He.
Yes.
Uh, Kevin Hapton, Aaron O'Leary, Hapton, Michael Stroud.
Yes.
Jennifer Bachelor.
Yes.
Uh, Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Gina Vashetti.
Yes.
Ronnie Tomarino.
Yes.
Jim Dollar.
For school and community, we discussed things that we've gone over in every single other report. We talked about the sale of the West Amwell School. We talked about the sale of the West Hamwell School and the different options and limitations of how important it is that we communicate to the public what we ultimately decide to do and how we we come came to that decision. Um we looked again at students leaving the district um over the last three years. We noted that the first years, we really focused on high schools, so we want to go in forward, look at all grades um and establish some goals to reduce the number of students leaving the district through that um additional information. We talked about the community classroom project, which is the volunteers. Um and we have eighteen volunteers signed up for that right now, and we're gonna continue to promote it. But um teachers have requested specific fields, so future communication um and promotion will include those specific fields. Uh we talked about the student board member and potential student activities in the survey. We talked about the career and college pathway framework. I don't have anything to add to that, it's a great presentation. And we talked about the N J S L A report, one thing that we reviewed was a white paper from the New Jersey Policy Institute. Um and it presents um ways to create meaningful and detailed goals around certain age groups and areas. So that's something that um we would be bringing to the the um reviewing with the the curriculum committee to see how can we create those those specific goals. And then we talked about the school-based youth services program. And one thing that I will note that wasn't mentioned was that, you know, Tony did talk about how the um mental health crisis of of students, has we've we've seen that in our school, we've seen an increase in kids um needing services. And a lot of that, even though we did make the decision to bring in a mental health clinician um on staff, a lot of that does fall on our guidance department. And so by bringing in this contract, we will be um moving some of that work off of them, which is important as they are looking at the current career and college preparation, but also as we implement this more extensive program. Um they'll be able to focus on. And that was it, and there's nothing to move.
What fields did the teachers request?
They requested marketing and social media, I I can tell you why I know this, because Michael was like, oh, that's all I do. Um social media, Google Analytics.
Writer.
Exercise and fitness.
Yes.
Bake, wasn't baking.
Baking.
Well, the future promotion will include that, so you'll get to see that when it when, in the next Lambertville Matters, it'll it'll have the specifics about what teaches. Teachers are able to ask, you know, for things that.
One of them, I believe, the baker was for a math class with practice.
And so we're actually.
All right, any questions? And at the end of the reports, we um normally we would do the acceptance of the different report, but we didn't have one last last year. We do um have the fire drills and safety drills that we have to um approve, but that's not something we have to vote on. And so now we can enter the second period of public comment.
Hello, Andrea Little from West Hamwell Township. Thank you for today's presentation, you've certainly covered a lot um with everything. Uh I just wanted to kind of touch base back on the turf field that was discussed at the last board meeting, and then I know um you mentioned you went to West Hamwell, but I did wanna talk about um so originally, when you were doing the turf field, it was going to be covered, the expense was gonna be covered with what you had now, but now it's going to be partially um paid for, and then you're going to be um, you know, getting a loan for the balance. So I'm not sure like why there was a change, but regardless of that, um I've just always been hesitant about the turf fields, because I know that that's a big controversy going on in the state, and there's a bill out there for um to ban turf fields by schools and municipalities for being built. Um whether that gets passed or not, but if it does get passed, when people have a turf field and it has to be replaced, um it will not be able to be replaced with a turf field, it has to go back to grass, which is a huge remediation and a huge expense. So has that been thought about as you're going into these um this precedent of like going after the turf field and getting all your final approvals, knowing that in ten years, which is a long ways now, but and it's not about just P F A's, it's about plast- microplastics, it's about tires, it's about all the different things that go into it, the runoff of that, and how it has to be actually removed and remediated and then grass put down, which is probably gonna cost more than what a turf field actually even costs to put down. So I just um just wanna present it to the entire board, because it came up last month, and just wanna make sure like we're looking at this thoughtfully um into the township and runoff of water and and farms that live below there as well, uh to make sure that we're just not putting contaminants in the water, thank you.
There's the second period of public comment. Do you have reason to go into a effective session? You know about how long?
Uh probably about twenty.
In about twenty minutes, we will but not be taking action when we come out. So I have the motion to go into an executive session.